I have motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Rock, uh, Erdman.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oi. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, visitors? No? We have some, but hello. Moving on to number five, are there any items on the consented, oops, mic up.
Mic it up.
Yep, sorry, mic up. Thank you. Any items on the consent agenda that you would like pulled out to discuss individually? Alright, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda 5.1 through 5.5.6?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Botts.
I'd just like to recognize Christ the King Lutheran Church and the Pipestone County Medical Center for their donations to our Wellness Center and Elementary Health Fund. We also add some individuals, Joseph, is it?
Yakum.
Yakum.
Mm-hmm.
Gary and Pat Gillen for making some donations for our student lunch account balances and also to our athletic program.
Thank you to all the donors. Any other discussion? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda 5.1 through 5.5.6 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
I already been making plans, I just want to keep making plans.
That doesn't mean you have to leave, Craig, you can stay. Alright, moving on to number six, 6.1.1. Jackie.
Budget year-to-date. We're at 35 percent. Last year at this time, we're at 35 percent. Are there any questions?
I love it.
Any questions for Jack? Alright, we're gonna move on then to 6.2 for the school board members.
The Finance and Budget Committee met to review budget parameters, which is 8.6 under new business, so I think we can just as well discuss what they discussed in their recommendations at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, sounds good.
Alright.
And 6.3, Mr. Anderson.
Enrollment is up, another 12 students. You know, we were kinda going down in the last two months, we've recovered almost 20 students, so that's in and out, it's winter, I hope they're here for the rest of the school year. But our enrollment, again, we were kinda concerned the way it was going, but now it's bounced back up again, so that's, that's a good sign, so. The other thing I had was the bond planning and information kinda campaign and where that's at with, I've been in contact with ISG and Kraus-Anderson probably weekly on where things are at. The review and comment should be ready this week by ISG, there's a cover letter that I need to sign up on and we'll send that in, so once we get that, I'll plan to send that out to the board members so you can look over it, but it's, it's an official document and I don't see where there's gonna be a lot of changes that occur, but I do want you to see that and review over it before we officially send it into the department, so it should be coming out this week, it'll be in a special email to you. I don't think you have to comment unless you here have something, but I think once you get through it, you'll kinda understand that it's in order and everything should be good. On the Kraus-Anderson, they have kinda put together a timeline, kind of game plan for the bond election and timeline for an informational campaign, there's some really good information that I'm excited about. They will wanna have a district steering committee, which is made up of the board and some administration, we may even bring on a few other community people we see fit, but this committee will kinda work with Kraus-Anderson on that, and I thought that on January 7th, when we do our reorganization meeting, we may wanna add another committee to our committee assignments, that being the bond steering committee, could be two, three-year position while we go through that bond, but I think it would be, and we can talk about that when we get to the organization meeting, but something you may wanna think about, do we keep the facilities and maintenance committee and have a steering committee, or have it all be one, I mean, might just end up being a lot of meetings for that, that one committee, but maybe that's fine with everybody, so I figured we'd talk a little bit about that when time gets close, but looks like we're gonna have that in order, ready to go about January, this'll really start, so. I do have a meeting or filming with Jeff Jones, they do around town for the local cable access, so I'm gonna do that on Thursday with him and then that'll kinda start running over the, over the break, and so that's kind of our, getting to be one of our first things where we start talking about this, so, and that's more time for process and what we're doing, just kinda, if you've ever seen that with Jeff, it's kinda sit on a couch.
You don't need a major.
It's like he's Johnny Carson or something. Wait for, wait for somebody to show up, Ed McMahon or something. But that's what I have for right now, and otherwise, you know, it's a busy time of year, holiday season's upon us, and there's a lot of concerts been going on, something just about every night, so I think once Friday hits, we're all gonna be a little sigh of relief and enjoy our families for a week and get a little time off to recover from all the business that we had going on here in December, so.
Okay.
But that's what I've got.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Any questions? Any old business, doesn't look like it. Moving on to number eight, new business, 8.1, approval of the audit report and journal entries, so we need two motions, so hello.
First, Matt will go through it with us and then, and then we'll get that, so.
Yeah, you can have one. Everybody should have a hard copy in front of them, and I will go through it, we got a 96-page document, so I am not, I'm not gonna go through everything line by line, I kinda made a summary here and I'm gonna just kinda go through it with the words as similar as I've done in previous years, and any questions, just, I don't come back and raise my head a lot, so just be able to screen whatever to get my attention, but Jackie can point you out. Starting on pages three, four, five, and six, we have our independent auditors' reports, this is where we take our responsibility for the financial statements, and one thing to bring your attention on the bottom of page four, we are required in the auditors' reports to renew any change in accounting principles that were adopted and implemented in the financial statements, we're required to bring that to the board's attention, and the board did adopt, the district did adopt a GESB statement number 75, accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions, which is basically health insurance obligations to retirees, the government accounting standards board have changed the presentation, and we have implemented that statement, it's effective through the June 30th, 2018 fiscal year, so you are in compliance with that new accounting pronouncement, and that is based on actual results prepared by the Hillby Company, they provide us the numbers, we implement them into your financial statements. And then, basically, in this four-page document, the statements that are shown in the financial statements that come out, present fairly the financial position and the results of operations of the district as of and for the year ended, new period 2018, it's an unqualified opinion, which is exactly what you're shooting for, if it's something other than unqualified, we would be discussing that with you well before this evening, so that's what you're shooting for, it's the highest opinion we can render in your financial statements, no qualifications, and with that said, I'm gonna move to the financial data. Information in front of the report is very condensed, so we included supplemental schedules in detail, starting on page 68, 69, 70, 71, and 72, all five of those pages is your general fund, and they laid out in the format, the first column is budget for the year, second column is actual results, third column over is variance, and then the fourth column is the 2017 actual results for comparative purposes. Again, I'm not gonna go through every particular item, I've got just some notes and things like that that we'll touch on as we go through. In the general fund, bottom of page 68, overall revenues were budgeted at $13,005.46312, actual results, second column in, was $13,005.77808, so you did better than budget in revenue category by $31,0496, comparing revenue to 17 to 18, you're up a little over $233,008.17 to 18. Budget variance of $31,0496, that's about a quarter of 1 percent variance, so that's really very close, quarter of 1 percent variance, budget to actual, so to be, that's about variance of $31,000 on a million, excuse me, $13,005, that's really very close. Top of the next page, we got our expenditures, expenditures are broken down into categories, the very first category of district and school administration is administration, budgeted was $872.05, actual was $97881, so you were over budgeted in that category, in that segregation by $35,796. District support services were budgeted at $357.241, actual was $332.465, you're under budget in that by $24,776. And then regular instruction is broken down into several categories, district-wide, elementary, middle school, and secondary school on the page 70, regular instruction in the middle of page 69, district-wide, students' regular instruction, district-wide, middle of the page, page 69 was budgeted at $485.12, actual was $487.988, so you're over budget by $2,876. Bottom of page 69, elementary, $2,096,844 was budgeted, $2,267,525 was actual, so we're over budgeted in the elementary by $107,641. And then top of the next page, middle school, budgeted was $1,287,980, actual was $1,356,975, so we're over budgeted by $68,995. And then the last, regular instruction, secondary school, $2,218,210 was budgeted, $2,48,468 was the actual, so you were under budgeted by $169,742. Taking all the previous categories, all four of them, adding them together, in regular instruction, you're budgeted for $6,88,186, and it came in at $6,169,56, so you're over budgeted by $72,770, that's about 1.1 percent variance, and collectively, in regular instruction, you're off $72,000, that's $6,001,000, that's really pretty close, again. Last on page 70, vocational instruction, budgeted at $255,410, actual was $319,548, you're over budgeted by $64,138 in vocational instruction. And then the top of page 71, exceptional instruction, was budgeted at $2,369,758, actual was $2,205,297, so you're under budget in exceptional instruction by $64,461. Instructional support services, in the middle of the page on 71, $703,641 was budgeted, and $692,409 was actual, under budget by $11,232. And then pupil support services, this is the transportation category, $1,660,78 was budgeted, actual was $1,621,2, so you're under budget in transportation by $40,066. And the top of page 72, site buildings and equipment, this is where maintenance and operation would have the physical property is, $1,610,972 was budgeted, $1,584,861 was actual, so you're under budgeted by $26,011. Fixed cost programs is unallocated insurance costs, property insurance was budgeted at $84,500, came in at $84.45, so you're under budgeted by $55. Collectively, all the expenditure programs on all of the previous pages were budgeted at $14,1,871, actual came in at $13,907,874, so collectively, you're under budget in the district expenditures by $93,997. Again, that's about .6 or .7 of 8 percent variance between the budgeted expenditures and the actual, and $90,000 on $14,000 is, in my opinion, very close. Subtracting the expenditures of $13,907,874 from the revenue on the first page, on page 68, of $13,005,77808, we have excess expenditures of $330,66. So we had a deficit in the general fund of $330,000, district had budgeted for a deficit of $455,559, so budget and actual comparison, we actually did better by $125,493. Ending fund balance in the general fund was $5,3,787. Now, if you can kinda stick your finger in there and turn to page 44, of that $5,033,787, on the top, or sort of the middle of the page of 44, $37,380 of that is set aside for prepaid items, so those are items that would be expended in 2000, and it's not expended, recognized as expense in the 18, 19 year end, they were paid at December, at June 30th, 2018, but are attributable to the next fiscal year. Just below that, we've got restricted fund balance, general fund highlighted there, starting with staff development, going all the way down to long-term facilities maintenance, so of that $5,3,787 of fund balance, $973,298 is reserved, restricted, for those spending categories that are listed there towards the bottom of page 44. Then at the top of page 45, the district has, in the middle of the page, committed fund balance, $142,686 is committed for severance obligations, and then just below that, assigned fund balance, $13,597 is set aside for assigned fund balance, and then at the bottom of the page on page 45, the general fund had unassigned fund balance, this is the fund balance, no reservations, no restrictions on it, of $3,816,926. When we add all those together, we end up with the ending fund balance on page 72 of District policy, set up in the past, is that we wanna maintain an unassigned fund balance of 25 to 34 percent of an average, three-year average or two-year average expenditures, two-year average, now you actually use three to kinda spread things out in case you have an unusual item. The district is averaging over the three-year period, $13,264 in expenditures, using that as our expenditure in the unassigned fund balance of $3,816,926, you're at 28.7 percent unassigned fund balance of the three-year average expenditures. The district has a, has a policy of maintaining at least 25 percent, so you're about middle of the road between the 25 and 34 percent. So not excessive, I don't believe, in my opinion, $5 million on, excuse me, $3.8 million on just about a 14 to 13, on $5 million dollar average expenditures, that is not, in my opinion, excessive.
Is that number going down, Matt?
It, it, right, we went down, well, we went forward, the previous year lands by $283,584, but we took a $330,000 decrease this year. The unassigned actually went down about, actually went up a little bit because we had less in the reserve categories, so the unassigned actually went up. The unassigned was $4,113 the previous year, and now we're $3,816, so the unassigned, take that back, actually went down $200,000. Any general fund questions I can answer for anyone? You budgeted for deficit $455, you only came in at $330, so you did better than budget, but obviously, deficit spending is, we've got wiggle room, but we're, if we continue the deficit spending, we erode that wiggle room, so. Any general, other general fund questions? If not, then I, then my next thing is to move to the special revenue funds. The district has two special revenue funds, food service and community service, so going to page 75, we have food service here, food service, this is the same year of the tax contract of food service. Middle of the page, budgeted revenues were $915,477, actual were $958,031, so we did better than budget by $42,554, and increased revenues from the previous year with just about $10,000. Expenditures were budgeted at $833,696, came in at $927,151, so we're over budgeted on our actual expenditures by $93,455. Subtracting the expenses of $927,151 from $958 revenue above, we actually went forward in the food service fund by $30,880. That had a beginning fund balance positive of $222,984, ends the year with a positive fund balance of $253,864, so that's, I think you probably used this analogy before, but the food service can at least break even, that's success in a lot of districts, it's tough to get the food service into the profit of the standard. So, that being said, all of that $253,864 is restricted fund balance, obviously just for food service purposes. And on page 76, we have the community service fund, same format, budget, actual, variance prior year, budgeted revenues were $439,09369, actual was $471,495, so the district did better than budget by $32,126. Expenditures were budgeted at $424,437, actual came in at $476,651, so we're over budgeted in expenditure category by $52,52,214. Subtracting the expenses from the revenue above, we have a small deficit in the community service fund of $51,56, that fund still ends the year with a positive fund balance of $178,628. If you can kinda stick your finger in there and go back to page 45, of that $178,628 of fund balance at the top of the page, there are restrictions on that, community ad has a restriction of $132,419, ECFE 47,816, board writing this actually has a deficit of $29,285, and then this overall community service restricted fund balance is $27,78, for a total restricted community service fund balance of $178,628, so literally, all of those funds are designated for specific community service activities.
Maybe I could add a little bit there, you know, our preschool, we're investing in four-year-old preschool, we've got a goal to try to get all of our children here, and we have some increased expenses with that, so, and that does come through the community service fund, and so that's why you're seeing negative balance there. We, we looked at it, we estimate that we're deficit spending about $49,000 to do the preschool as we're seeing, so.
And that is not uncommon, it's part of your program of getting the kids to the school.
Some schools, we, Tony, the Spartan has done an analysis, we are, we are pushing over 90 percent of all of our four-year-old, all of our kindergarteners having a preschool experience, so the efforts that we've put forth to encourage that are showing, but it is an investment by the district that, you know, right now, we can handle, and learning readiness, we shouldn't have a negative fund balance there, but, you know, that's something that when we talked about in our operating levy is a way to help offset some of that, of course, that part of the operating levy didn't, didn't go, so, but this is where some decisions need to be.
There's not a lot of revenue in that category.
No, no, we could increase, you know, fees, or we could, we could look at some things, so we'll have to keep an eye on that because right now, we've got enough cushion to cover that, but we can't keep going on.
In effect, a deficit would need to be funded out of the general fund if it were to come zero, so.
The general fund has to take care of that, so that's where we're gonna have to keep an eye on that.
Yes.
It's a good thing, I think we're investing where we need to, but there is a financial price to this.
But it's almost a cost of the education isn't showing up in the general fund, in fact, and it's hopefully showing curriculum and education benefits to the kids, it's hard to quantify over on the other side.
Correct.
Capital projects fund is, is basically zeroed out, we only have the revenue expenditures who are $790,000, lease proceeds that went in there and $790,000 spent, which was the Tenscore project, so that, it just didn't handle, zeroed itself out, so we did not include a separate schedule for that. Page 79, we've got the debt service fund, this fund exists strictly to pay principal interest, and property tax, and state aid collections on the outstanding bond issues, $1,564,169 is budgeted, $1,519,323, those are actual, deficit of, there were decreases, but adjustment of revenues of $44,846 from budget, expenditures were spot on, we budgeted for $1,539,158, that's exactly what it was, so subtract, subtracting the expenses from the revenue above, we have a deficit of $19,835, we had a deficit of $19,964 the previous year, I believe the state is starting to kinda tweak that levy balance because we only have two more years, you got to do March, and March of 19, and March of 20, and I think the bond issues paid off, if I look in my notes, is that right, two years?
Yeah.
Two years on the bond issue, March of 19 and March of 20, March of this, this upcoming March, and the next one, there's two payments left. Yep, that's, $3,005,000 was the outstanding balance at June 30th, 18, and $4,495 was left to go in this next payment, and then the remainder, and you'll be done, so. And the state's starting to make, I believe, an adjustment on that for the levy purposes because that fund theoretically should end with a zero balance, so probably will be a small plus or minus when that last payment is made, but that should hopefully be very close to zero at the time of final debt payment.
Later this evening, after the truth of taxation, we make our final levy on the box.
Right, it would be, yep, it would be your last one.
Twenty revenue, yep.
Yep, the revenue should be recognized in that fiscal year.
So we're, down to it.
Yeah, it's great.
Yep.
It's a candy done. I'm gonna, and then I've got some more independent auditors' reports I'm gonna go through here relatively quickly, so it's not tied up, I do use a custom, page 80, 81, 81, and 283, we have our independent auditor report on internal control and on compliance as it relates to government auditing standards. During the course of our audit, we test the school district's internal control, which is how transactions move through the district, receipts, dispersments, approvals, various accounting procedure processes, and it would also test your compliance of two publications, one called government auditing standards, and the other one called the Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit Guide for school districts, and happy to report, we have no instances of noncompliance with either government auditing standards or the Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit Guide. Middle, or top of the page 82, second paragraph, we have three things that we'll talk about when we get to the back as far as findings and recommendations, these have been in previous audit reports, and we'll touch on those when we get to the end collectively. Then we, on page 84, and 85, and 86, we have another independent auditor report as it relates to federally funded programs and internal control and compliance with a publication called Uniform Guides, which is put out by the Office of Management and Budget, and we're happy to report, there were no instances of noncompliance with your federally funded programs, the major programs, which is basically the food service programs in the school. We do have a couple of internal control deficiencies, which are the same as in the government auditing standards, that we'll touch on at the end, but again, no instances of noncompliance with federal, federally funded program compliance requirements. Then on page 87 and 88, we have another independent auditor report as it relates to cash receipts and dispersment of the student activity funds, they're maintained on a cash basis, basically starting out with beginning cash, receipt dispersment, ending cash, and our opinion on the statement of cash receipts that's on page 89 is an unqualified opinion with the exception of, of the fact that it's prepared on the cash basis of accounting, which basically means you start with beginning cash, we receive some dispersment. which basically means you start with beginning cash, receipt dispersment, and kind of with the ending cash. So on page eighty-nine, we have that statement receipts and dispersments, which takes the student activity funds, a balance of seventy-two thousand five twenty-nine, receipts of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine thirty-four, expenditures of a hundred and forty-nine thousand eighty-seven dollars for ending student account balances of eighty-two thousand three seventy-six ninety-two. You can see the various activities on the far left-hand side. It's broken down by those individual activities and maintained specifically. Each one of those accounts is maintained specifically in accounting for separately in the district records. And on page ninety, we have another independent auditor's report. This is with regard to compliance with the manual for activity fund accounting, which is put out by the Minnesota Department of Education. So we test compliance with the manual for student activity fund accounting as it relates to student activity funds. And we found no instances of non-compliance with the manual for student activity accounting as is put together by the Minnesota Department of Education, which is good. On page ninety-one, we have a schedule of the expenditures of federal awards. These remaining things now are for the most part in here for the benefit of the federal audit clearinghouse and we submit the audit report to the federal government for the year end. On page ninety-one, we've got a schedule of the various federally funded programs in the district. And you can see we have told federal funds received and expended of nine hundred four thousand eight twenty-six, of which four hundred ninety-six thousand eight ten was made up of the food service programs of the child nutrition cluster of school breakfast, school lunch, special milk, and summer food service program. Then the remainder of the, basically the flow through from the service co-op and then the title programs on the bottom, three categories of federally funded programs. So a little over nine hundred thousand dollars needed in the district for federal programs. Once you get about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, we're required to do an audit in accordance with the uniform guidance, which is what we have done for the district. So then going to page ninety-two, schedule of findings and recommendations. Some of the auditor's results, this is information to the federal audit clearinghouse. And on top of page ninety-three, these are our actual findings and recommendations. And these have all been in prior reports for the district and are in virtually all of the reports and audits that our firm does, except in the city pipe stone, which has items in place that can eliminate some of these. But starting in, top of page ninety-three, finding nineteen ninety-one dash zero zero one, internal accounting controls. We do not have an adequate segregation duties in the accounting functions. And we have one primary bookkeeper and it's just economically inconvenient. We have other people involved in the accounting process, but we have one primary bookkeeper in the system. And in an ideal system, we'd have several people who are initial in law often functions and we have inadequate segregation duties. It just isn't economically feasible to design a system in a small organization that eliminates that component. I always mention that you guys as a school are part of the mitigating circumstances in that. If you have questions on the items that you're approving and the consent agenda and other items that are presented, if you have questions, ask a question, continue to ask it. Do you get an answer you're comfortable with, not just an answer? Get an answer that you're comfortable with because you are part of the mitigating circumstances in that lack of internal control. Then on page ninety-three, middle of the page, finding two thousand seven dash zero zero one, yep, financial statements. Our responsibility as auditors is to render our opinion, which we dealt with on the first pages three, four, five, and six, where we render our opinion on the financial statements. Not necessarily prepare the financial statements, but in our contracts, we purchase all of our organizations with this exception of the city pipe stone, we also prepare the financial statements so that they're in accordance with general accepted accounting principles, disclosures, presentation, that type of thing. It's no reflection on the work that's done here at the district in the accounting department. It's not something you send somebody to a half a day class and you come back and they prepare their financial statements in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. So as long as the profession allows us to continue, and this is something that down the road may be an issue, we will continue to prepare the financial statements, but there may come a point in time where a firm may have to come in and prepare the financial statements and then the auditor audit those financial statements. End of the day, the document's gonna be the same, it's just gonna be dollars out of pocket compliance. It's just, the accounting profession doesn't recognize selfless Minnesota. They're always small organizations, everything is large. We've got an accounting department and they actually prepare the financial statements and give those to the auditor. But it's just not, it's just not feasible out here in the real world. Top of page ninety-four, previously reported item is not resolved, two thousand ten dash zero zero one. A major component of revenue in the district is property tax revenues. We're gonna remedy this this year. We just didn't get our own to the time of teaching Jackie how to compute the property tax revenue and the tax received. It's not a difficult process, there's actually spreadsheets put out by the service co-op that you can drop the numbers into. We computed them again this year just because of the timing and not being able to compute that. Two thousand ten dash zero zero one, that comment will more than likely be removed from future audits. Page ninety-four, we are required, because you're the spend greater than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funds, we're required to basically reiterate all of these comments one more time as it relates to major federal financial award programs. So on page ninety-four, in the middle of page two thousand, two thousand dash zero zero three, internal accounting controls. We're basically saying again, as it applies to federally funded programs. Top of the next page, two thousand ten dash zero zero two, audit adjustments. We're required to say again that we have made audit adjustments for the most part in the property tax account. And we're required to say that again as it relates to major federally awarded programs. And that is the actual report itself, presentation. Everyone should have hopefully two loose letters in the back of the report. I'm gonna touch on the first one, it says communication with those chairs of governance, conclusion of audit. This is required communication that we have with the governing board. Significant audit findings, qualitative aspects of accounting practices. As stated there at the middle in the italics, the district adopted the asking statement number seventy-five, according to financial reporting, proposed employment benefits other than pension, OPEV. We're required to say that that has been implemented in the financial statements and we're good to go on that. Top of page two, we're also required to bring to your attention any significant estimates of financial statements that are prepared under. Most significant estimates in the financial statements are the computation of general aid and special aid. Those are kind of a moving target and can be right up until spring. I double-checked the state auditor's website and actually as of, as of the last one, I think November fifteenth was the last one that I had on general aid and special aid. We're actually under in our revenue. We're gonna receive a little bit more than what we booked as a receivable. So the conservative bean counter, both myself and Jackie, we're all averaging under. We'd rather be under on the revenue. And so general aid, I think, gotta be a million, some that you're gonna, that you rebooked as revenue. You're gonna get approximately nine million seven eighty-nine. You're gonna get about thirty thousand dollars more as it looks on the last posted numbers for the Minnesota Department of Ed. So we're gonna have a little more general aid revenue coming, which is great. Middle of page, difficulties and challenges performing the audit. We encounter no significant difficulties if you admit them or otherwise. Accorrected and uncorrected misstatements. If there are any uncorrected misstatements in the financial statements, I would tell you what those are. I never had to tell anybody what an uncorrected misstatement is. Disagreements with management. If we had any disagreements with management during the course of the audit, we discuss that here. We're pleased to report no disagreements. Management's representations. We have retained the representation of other promising independent and business managers that we have been provided everything we asked for. Consultations with other independent consultants in the top of the third page. If either the district or firm thought it necessary to consult with another firm maybe the application of accounting principle, or a presentation of an item, we discuss that here. We had no such consultations. And other audit findings or issues, if there was anything else I thought should come to the governing board's attention that I hadn't discussed previously, I would discuss that here. I think we've covered most everything in the prior information that we went through. And that is the governance letter. And everyone should have one letter that says management letter. And behind that letter is the actual adjustments that were posted to the financial statements. For the most part, I would say probably seventy-five percent of these are adjustments that the business manager Jackie prepared. And we just posted the financials because she prepared them after we cut off the June thirty. At some point in time, we say no more, if you have more adjustments, Jackie give them to us. And so a vast majority of those are just her setting up receivables, payables, normal year-end things to accrue receivables and payables. Some reclassifications for reporting purposes to the Department of Education, moving things between expenditure categories to line up with revenue categories and that type of thing. But what I consider to be not pervasive and pretty much all routine year-end accounting, year-end review. These have all been included to the district system and the district system has been compared back to the audit reports. The two are depending exactly. And that's my presentation for this evening. Any questions or if not, as I always said, if you're looking at this at a later date, if you've got a question on a number or something, contact me, don't wonder. There's a lot of information that comes together in this ninety-six pages. So feel free to contact me because it's, a lot of things are summarized to get through the report. And actually in front of the report, it's considerably more summarized. The general fund is one page in the back and the detail is five pages and the balance is probably forty pages, so.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions while we?
I guess every year about this time I ask. So the overall financial health of Pipestone area schools, you would say?
Is, of course, my little snapshot of June thirty, you know, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars deficit, another three thirty, and within that twenty-five percent, we're twenty, so we're one year, maybe two of negative expenditures versus revenues that way. And we're gonna be pushing with the district imposed minimum on assigned fund balances. So we're good, I mean, yes, good, but not excessive. Back to my original comment regarding fund balances, I don't think it's excessive at all. No. And we got the twenty percent of assigned fund balance in three years' average expenditures. Couple of dumps in the road and some capital outlay type items, non-budgeted, yeah.
But as of right now?
As of, I guess, really good.
So we're good.
With a caveat.
Yeah. Well, later on in the, in the meeting, we have to talk about next year's budgeting.
Right, right. And so if we're adjusted in, and I mean, there are, I mean, some of the, some of the fund balances is, comes forward and you build it and then spend it, so it's timing wise. But from a continually operational standpoint, we all know deficit spending doesn't work at the end of the day.
Okay.
How do you do then?
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give me a call. I mean, seriously, that was, a lot that comes together to get to this point, so.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Need to approve or just, we've heard the audit, is there?
Approve the audit report and then also the journal entries.
Yes, two separate.
Two separate ones. So first, do I have a motion to approve the audit report?
So I'll move.
Second?
Thank you, thank you. Got it? Any other discussion on the audit report? Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the audit report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the journal entries?
So I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Oi. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Toper. Any other discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the journal entries signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Moving on to eight point two. TNT, the truth in taxation.
Truth and taxation. It's coming up here. Kyle, go ahead.
He just went to the facility.
Okay, he's coming back. Okay, he's coming up.
Well, he's the only one here, so I was just going to say that truth and taxation is, is one time where there can be dialogue with the community and the board during the meeting. So when we go through this report, if there aren't questions, they can be asked of the board and we can discuss and talk about things. So that's just one thing that's a little bit unusual about the truth and taxation meeting is that there is that dialogue. Sometimes people just understand that the board is a public entity and you conduct your business in public. That doesn't mean people, people get to listen to this, but they don't get to discuss with you what's going on. It should all be done at different times. So I just wanted to make sure that's where that was at. So the first five slides probably aren't much different than they are before. So I'll just get started with our truth and taxation. If you have questions, please be sure to ask me. Jackie is also there and is here. And if there are any questions on this. Truth and taxation is about our taxes and our levy for the next fiscal year. The truth and taxation law says that we have to send out proposed tax levy information, which was done and the board approved the initial back in September. And from that, the county sent out the tax statements. At this meeting, this is where the final decision is made and approved and then that will be our taxation for next year. Second part is that we have to have a public meeting and that's what this is. Kyle, I did remind that it is a public meeting and this is one time when the community can interact with the board at a board meeting. So if there are questions that come up, they can be asked of the board during this meeting within reasonable time limits. The requirements of truth and taxation is to discuss our proposed tax, proposed property tax levy for payable 2019. It's also to talk about our current budget and also some time to ask questions. And like I said, that information went out. It's been there for almost two and a half months, so people have had the time to look at this. Some points to remember, revenue formulas, a lot of these are set by the state legislature. We do have voter-approved referendums, those are very specific. The levy and state aid mix and equalizations are set by the legislature. And I also say that an increase in local taxes does not necessarily mean that the school district is getting any greater revenues. There's so many different factors that go into that. It's just, we just don't, can't raise them. And sometimes when taxes go up, we don't get any more money. A little bit about budget, we do have different funds. The general fund is where our main operations and the operation of our school district go through there. That's the largest part. We just heard the audit report. You know, we have over thirteen million dollars in our general fund. That is our main fund and that, those dollars are used for that. We also have food service fund two. That is just for our food and nutrition programs. And the reason why you have these different funds is the money can't, you can't use food service dollars to pay for textbooks. Those dollars are only used for food service. Same as community service, this is our community education. We also run our early childhood programs out of here and that can school readiness. That's fund four. Fund six is one that we had for a construction project when we did the tennis courts. The dollars for that went into that construction fund. And if we do a bond on an elementary and that were passed, those dollars would go into a construction service fund. We also have fund seven, which is debt service. This is where the, you pay, this is where our mortgage is right now. So the, what we're paying on this building in that, all of that goes through the debt service fund. Meaning only those dollars can be used for debt service. So sometimes people get confused and if, you know, when we're talking about general fund and people say, well, you're making reductions in your general fund, why are you looking to build? They're two different funds. You have to almost look at each one of them separately. So that's, that's how school finance works and it isn't just where we can use dollars however we want. There are restrictions on a number of them. Our eighteen nineteen, here is our budgeted revenues. We just heard from Matt the actual for last year. You didn't, you were looking at the comparison to the year before. Now you're looking at last year to this year. So our general fund has actual revenues last year of thirteen point five million. We're budgeted for thirteen point eight, about a two point three percent increase in revenues. Fund food service is down just a little bit. And community service is down about three percent. Of course, if you look at that, that's only about twenty thousand dollars. So the percentages, you have to look at the total number where things are at. And then debt service, of course, is, we're budgeted to just have a little bit more revenue. It's kind of the final payment that we're going to be making. So the levy has to be right on what's left. So total, total budget of the district, we're looking at sixteen and a half million dollars in revenue. And we're budgeted for sixteen point eight, which is about a one point eight percent increase. If you recall, the state gave us two percent on the formula. That does not equate to two percent. So we have one point eight percent is where things are at. This shows a little bit about where our revenues come from. The, the large green is our state and the gold is the federal. So well over, about eighty percent of our funds come from state and federal education. The federal government does not have a big role to play. As you can see, that's only about five percent of our revenues. The red is local. The red is local taxes, and then the darker green is other local. This is our fees and gate receipts and, you know, donations that people make. That ends up being about another five percent of our revenue. Our expenditures, here you can see that we had actual expenditures of thirteen point nine million last year. We were budgeted to have that be fourteen point seven, so there's a six percent increase in our general fund budget for next, for this year. Food service is down again just a little bit. Community service went down about fifty thousand in revenues. And debt service, as you can see, we are right on. That's the final payment, so we're feeling pretty good about that number. We're within two hundred dollars, somewhere along there. Little bit of cushion. Jackie's always got to have a little cushion there. But overall, our, our budget expenditures are going up just under five percent is, is where things are at with our expenditures this year. Anybody have any questions on our budget? These were where we're at. Of course, if you recall, as we always state, we always are very conservative in budgeting. We, we estimate the revenues probably on the conservative or safe side, which is usually lower than what we get. And our expenditures, we usually look at the top end, and we typically come in under that. So, we do have about an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit, almost nine hundred thousand dollar deficit budgeted, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. What do our, where do our funds go? The light, darker green, uh, let's see here, I think I got this green. That is administration. This is regular instruction. This is special education, and these are pupil support. The brown is, is our maintenance, and this is our debt service, and this is community service. So, from here, all the way around, you can see about eighty percent of all of our expenditures go to the classroom and to what's happening in our learning areas. And then you have under twenty-five percent that is due to the maintenance and those types of things and debt service of our buildings. So, overall, the taxes, the local taxes that are generated, about forty-seven percent go right into the general fund. That's mostly our operating levy. Community education accounts for about three percent, three point six percent. And then our debt services, the other half of our local taxes that pay for our schools. So, that's where our local taxes go in the budget for our district. Here is a breakdown of what that is. The general fund, as you can see, we have last year's and then this year's. There is a nine point nine percent increase in the general fund levy. There is about a six percent reduction in the community service levy. And then the debt is about one point nine percent. So, total levy this year is going up five point two percent. We'll get to why that is a little bit later, but that is what we are proposing, a five percent increase in our local levy. What are the main variables for that? Well, we said before, changes in market values, classifications, class rates, change in property tax credits. All of these things are determined by the state. The third bullet there is the, is a lease levy increase for the tennis courts and for the additional preschool classrooms. So, this is where you'll see some of our increase comes from for paying off, paying off those things. Also, there's an achievement and integration program. This is the first, next year is the first year we're eligible to receive achievement and integration. This is to help us close achievement gaps, and it's going to be about a hundred thousand dollars that we'll be able to use to, to make those improvements in our school system. Others, increases and decreases are caused by state funding formulas, property values again, and the value of other properties. Now, there's all kinds of little factors that can increase that. Some people's house values go up, some people's house values stay the same. This is your tax statement. This is where you do see where your property values are. This is all done by the county, not by the school district. The county makes these determinations based on that market value is where your taxes come in, and the proposed taxes. You get these statements. This should be sent out in the spring, I believe. March, April? March? Spring. That, that's kind of vague. I should probably find out when. March or April is when?
I thought we got, I already got one too.
I thought we got it too.
It's like, but it's your estimate. I don't think it's the actual.
The estimate is the estimate.
Those were our estimated, because you have to see what they are.
Yeah.
We're making our final. Now, they're, now the county's going to get.
But I did get the estimate, yeah.
They show you what is proposed, so that you can come in and talk to your local county, school, or city for what your tax increases are before the Truth and Taxation, because all hold the same meeting, so.
When somebody was saying that the, there is no homestead exclusion now, or is, is that not true? Because some about they didn't sign some, the homestead bill or something?
I've never.
I don't know what, that's what someone was saying, they were talking about it. But I don't know that for sure.
Tyler, we're no one. You can give Tyler a follow-up. Nick, while he's, he's.
Yeah. I don't know, someone was saying that, that they never signed it. The government never, never signed it.
That everyone taxes it every month. I can't think that's true, but.
Well, I can't, but taxes have gone up.
Property value is one up, quite a bit.
But the state, I think the county did, taxes went up too, or something. City taxes.
Right, right.
This is your tax statement. If anybody ever needs help with that, the county can help, but also, no, I'm not going to volunteer Jackie to help people.
We all.
We're all going to show up for your houses tomorrow.
Devin Merrill will be able to do just fine helping you out. They'll, they'd love to help you with your tax statement, get you out to the courthouse. The next here is about the education formula and equalization. This kind of goes back a ways, but wanted to have a, a general and uniform system of education and funding. They wanted to kind of try to keep it equitable across the state. It shouldn't matter where you live and the quality of education you receive. So, they put in different equalization factors, and I'll get to that a little bit, but I'm just kind of prepping that the state does equalize funding for schools to a point to help some areas that are property poor be able to continue to raise funds for that. So, the next few slides are going to really talk about that. M R E A helps us with this information and shares that. It is important to note that since two thousand and three, neither the basic formula nor equalization have kept up with inflation or market value. So, we continue to have, talk about there's a gap between, and we've never caught up, and we don't catch up with inflation. So, schools have, have struggled with some of the funding. Where we're at, this is our operating levy. We generate one thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars per student, or for, per adjusted pupil unit. You can see the state average is now thirteen seventy-one. If you recall, this last year, I believe, the state average was about twelve hundred and twenty-five dollars. We were right about at the state average. Now, you can see we've fallen almost two hundred dollars below the state average. The median, which is the middle, if they put all three hundred and sixty school districts, median is the middle, so about nine hundred and eighty-three. So, Pipestone is a little bit above the median in, in terms of operating levies. You can see the, the dark brown are where they have the heaviest levies, I should say, highest levies per pupil. You will see the metro area is very dark. You will see some other areas that are there. Red is a little bit, and we're in the redder area. And then the yellow, and the yellow and the white are ones where there, you'll see very small operating levy values per pupil. Pipestone is in that middle to, to upper middle range, which shows again in the median part. This one is where we talk about what is, what is the referendum market value? How much value is there behind a student and behind a pupil unit? And here you'll see, in Pipestone, we have two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in property value for every student. The average in the state is five hundred and eighty-three thousand, and the median district, again, in property value is four hundred and fourteen. So, in this way, Pipestone is actually down on the other end, and you can see how the outstate is much darker, whereas the metro is very light-colored, and they have a lot of property value behind their students. So, what does that mean when we have low property value? That means we're eligible for a lot more equalization. So, here is our operating levy, and you can see that we have, the eleven ninety-eight is broken down into local optional, tier one, tier two, and tier three, and how much our levy is broken down there. This first column shows the aid. This is what the state pays, and this is what local taxpayers pay. So, you can see that our operating levy of one point three million, about seven hundred thousand of that is paid by the state, and about seven hundred and twenty-six thousand is paid by local taxes. Now, I know those numbers don't quite add up, which I'm, again, looking at Jackie going, that is not one point three million. Thus, I have the sixty-one thousand because of some adjustment that was made. That's where the number, and it adds up to one point three seven one million, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. But there's an adjustment again, so this is about the best way I could show it. But I also wanted to make it clear that, that we maximize, for the most part, our equalization with the state on our operating levy. So, that's a pretty good value for, you know, what we pay for our operating levy. We also have long-term facility maintenance. This was a rather new thing. We're now into year four, but this was not in place before. But this is part of a levy that helps us to maintain our facilities. So, we've been able to do a number of things, and we will continue to do that. There is some equalization that is a part of, of long-term facility maintenance. This year, where state aid is about forty-three thousand, almost forty-three, forty-four thousand in state aid that's paid for us to maintain our facilities. And here's that breakdown again. You can see in comparison to last year also. So, the state aid went up eighteen thousand dollars, increase because of our equalization and the numbers that we have. I also want to make sure that it's clear that the, and the ag to school, the forty percent ag to school, ag to bond credit saves our school district four hundred, well, doesn't save the school district, saves taxpayers in our school district four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a year. This is specifically on agricultural land, farmland. Home, farmers and, and those who own farmland that rent it out get all of our dollars are applied for that. And that is towards the bond, what is going to pay on the building. The ag to school does not count for operating levy. It does show here that on five hundred thousand dollars in value, land value, it's about eighty-four dollars that's credited, and people see that. Lance has such a great quote, we just keep it on there every year. May have to get a refreshing one for him. You know, we, we talked about before ag to school, you know, there was a, a heavier burden on things like bond, bonds on our agricultural property and on our farmers. And, you know, this ag to school was, was passed by the legislature. It's been in place for the last couple of years. It is state law, and it'll be there until somebody changes it. But we have to say that, that when they passed that, that was bipartisan, almost unanimous support for that. That was not something that was contentious. It, it was set to be passed, of course, so the contention came because the governor vetoed this two years ago, or three years ago. But that was because of the politics being played. When it did get passed, they pulled it out, they didn't play politics with it. It was not in the omnibus bill, and they got it in there, because I think people said we need to do this. And it just makes a lot of sense. So, I just want to, this, this is on your tax bill. It is not something that you see from the school. It's a tax credit that you would find in your proposed tax, and it says agricultural market value credit. That is the ag to school that would go right in there on your tax statement. So, I don't have that, because I don't own any farmland, so, but this is where these go on that farmland, so. If anybody has any questions on that. So, in closing, basically, the specific increases of five point two percent. We've got tennis courts that were added in through lease levy, achievement and integration. And then I wanted to say the local tax burden on that is thirty-two thousand. The state will, will pay seventy-four thousand of that, so that's a pretty good deal. About, about two-thirds of that will be in state aid, so that's a, that's a good thing. This is the final levy for debt redemption on the middle school, high school building. So, we are, we are levying the final payment. This will be free and clear, the middle school, high school. And, you know, when we talk about the elementary facility, that's where we talk about that being able to go right from one to another if that passes this year, so. And then, of course, changes in property values, state formula, that has an impact on that. I don't know if anybody has any questions, comments on Truth and Taxation?
Great job.
Jackie? Anything to add? Well, all right. Well, that's, that's where things are at. Some anxiety putting this together. Kevin, Kevin had some numbers, and of course, thank, thank, she's very grateful to Jackie for giving him the right numbers. I double-checked them all, have to.
Just accept the compliment, Jackie. Just say thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Basically, what I have up here is the resolution that we are going to authorize, the school district is authorized to make the following proposed tax levies for general purposes. The maintenance general fund, putting referendum of one million, five hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Community service of one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and six cents. Debt service of one million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-four cents for a total proposed school tax levy of three million, one hundred and ninety thousand and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Double-checked those.
Double-checked the number.
I've double-checked them.
Double-checked them twice.
Gotta make sure.
All right. So, I need a motion, correct?
And with the dollar amount listed as well.
The levy limitation certification, two thousand and eighteen, payable two thousand and nineteen, with?
Said at three million, one hundred and ninety thousand, sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
So, move.
Thank you, Mr. Herdman.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Any other questions?
I'm going to say it got really fast and print this off, so I can get a signature.
That's okay.
I'll be right back.
Sneak away. Comments? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the levy limitation certification, two thousand and eighteen, payable two thousand and nineteen, for that amount, that he just shut down?
Three million, one hundred and ninety thousand, sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Thank you. Signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point four. Resolution establishing combined polling place for multiple precincts in designated hours during which the polling place will remain open for voting for school district elections, not held on the day of statewide election.
Okay. Oh, boy. This is a little bit different than in the past we've done. There was a change in law on polling places. Normally, we run elections out here at the school, but due to the change in the ring and the roll, I don't know if that's a good word to use, but we'd have to work with the city to coordinate, and they would have to send out mailings to all constituents. And then when they change back for their general election, they would have to, I mean, it, it just. it just, and then I find out that St. Louis, Leo's, Leo is going to charge $200 for the use of their facility to hold the election, and for that amount not to disrupt our school day, it just seems logical. So this election, we need to do a resolution that it will be the joint polling places of all precincts that are part of the school district. So everybody has to come in to St. Leo to vote. There's, it's not here, it's not, you know, there's absentee ballots, but I believe in the general election, the townships had mail-in. This is not a mail-in. This is, everybody has to come in to vote on this, or request absentee ballots. This resolution states that we are going to use St. Leo Catholic Church at 415 South Hiawatha Avenue, Pipestone, Minnesota, as our combined polling place for all of those townships, cities, townships and cities within the Pipestone School District, Pipestone Area School District. The election will also, voting will take place from 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The actual election, we will take care of, but this is just the polling place, so.
Okay. So I need a motion.
So...
Thank you, Mr. Oy.
Second.
Take, take.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Any other discussion or questions? Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution establishing combined polling place for multiple precincts and designated hours during which the polling place will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of statewide election, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.5, resolution relating to determining the necessity of issuing general obligation bonds and calling a special election thereon.
At our last meeting, the board directed me to begin the process of preparing for an election for a bond for an elementary school, pre-K through grade five elementary school, and also a second question for the safety and security measures here at the middle school, high school. And also, we need to do the resolution saying we're gonna call this election. The election will be held on April 9th. Here is the question. General obligation, school building bonds not to exceed $26.8 million for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including a pre-K through grade five elementary And this also has specific language regarding the decommissioning of the existing elementary schools. And I want this to be clear, that this gives us that option to do those things, and that's what's in here. That kind of becomes your scope. Someone asked one time, what if some opportunity came and somebody wanted to buy an elementary building? The board still has the right to entertain that. But we also want to make sure that we have the decommissioning in here, because if that's what happens, that's what happens. So we can make some of those decisions down the road, but that's in here. The second is for $930,000 for acquisition and betterment of the middle school, high school, safety and security improvements. And that would, that is contingent upon the passage of question one. So if one doesn't pass, two doesn't pass. And the reason for that is, is when you're doing these types of construction projects, you just shouldn't get them all done at one time, and you don't want to start having part of that, I don't know, that's probably not the, you're not gonna get as good a deals for that type of work, so. That is basically, and that's where it says right down here, contingent on question one. So this is the resolution calling for the election to be held on April 9th.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So long.
Thank you, Mr. Botts. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other questions for Kevin? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution relating to determining the necessity of issuing general obligation bonds and calling a special election thereon April 9th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. We're gonna have an election now. Real, real.
It's real.
Yeah.
8.6, 2019-20 budget parameters.
On, what was that? Was it last week?
10th.
10th. The Finance Budget Committee met to discuss our budget parameters, which you heard tonight. From the audit, we deficit spent $330,000 last year. And we are set, as you look up on the board, I have the 2019 expenditures and revenues, and we are set to deficit spend about $890,000. We met with the committee and talked. Jackie and I feel that typically, that's pretty high. It's probably not gonna be that, but we're pretty confident that we're going to deficit spend this year. Our fund balance, here's our fund balance according to our school board policy. You heard Mr. Taubert explain that according to his calculations, our fund balance is at 28%. There's different ways of calculating fund balances. We could probably do it 10 different ways. We and the, and the school board has chose the policy to set the fund balance based upon the way the Minnesota Department of Education calculates statutory operating debt. If you want to know what that is, it's policy 750, but it's all of our designated and undesig- oh, boy, unreserved and reserved fund balances and minus whatever.
I've got, if anyone wants to see how it was calculated, I went through with the Finance Committee. I've got all the documentation if you want to see how it's done.
According to our policy, our fund balance right now is 33.6%. We need to have a, maintain a fund balance between 25 and 34%. We did a five-year historical. You can see we've been solid. We still continue to be solid, you know. But when you start, the committee talked, we're, if we're deficit spending, we gotta make some type of adjustment at this point in planning for next year, that we have to get out in front of this a little bit and slow this down and see where things, make sure that we don't get, because it just keeps multiplying, and it should just keep getting bigger, so. If you keep doing that, $5 million is not gonna take long to be gone. So we've always been good financial stewards. I have this history for going back quite a ways. You can see our enrollment has been very stable the last five years. If I look over the last 10 years, it's been about in the same ballpark. We're, you know, a little bit of a tick up, which were estimated, you know, this year we had a larger, small senior class last year. This year, we have a larger senior class, so, you know, it'll balance out again, but we'll look at that. After discussion, the Finance Budget Committee recommended, felt that it would be prudent that the board consider directing the administration to reduce between 400 or give a, what would $400,000 in reductions look like? Up to $600,000 in reductions. So it's kind of a 400, 500, 600,000 dollars in reductions. The administrative team would begin working on that here in January, and would, we'll do a spot check with the Finance Budget Committee in February to make sure we're on the right path. And then by first March is when we would begin presenting those recommendations or where that is at to the board at this time, so. That, how's that?
Think you nailed it.
Marcy, Jeff, and Randy went through, and we looked at all of these things, how we kind of got here, where things are at. If you want to, I suppose I could bring that up too. Our $330,000 deficit, we knew we were gonna have to take a little bit out of the fund balance for the tennis courts, so there's 100,000. We had some increases in special education transportation. We had some other unforeseen increases in special education. That's where most of this came from, so. We also have settled employee contracts, you know, 3% or better, you know, which I don't think we're out of line. We trying to keep up, so we just have some of that. And I think, you know, the committee also talked about that, you know, we failed three times for an increase in our operating levy. You know, we were asking for increased revenues, which would have helped to offset this, but it just hasn't passed. And I think the community's just saying, "Need to tighten your belt a little bit on this one," and so we'll have to move forward with that. But if it continues, you know, we may have to look at that second or another increase in operating levy, but I don't think that's something we need to do right now. I think we have to look at making some reductions, which I've been here for three years. It'd be nice to do a overall look, top to bottom, to see where we're at, but, you know, when you dig into this stuff, you gotta dig in deep. So what are we doing? How are we doing it? Why are we doing it?
So the $500,000 difference between the 2018, 2019 is it's tennis courts and special ed? Or that's the 300,000?
That's the 330,000.
This year. So what's the, what's the...
800?
Yeah, I mean, what's the $500,000 difference between this year and next year?
Well, we have a street assessment. We know from Hill, it's about 90,000. Our budget has, a lot of it is our employee contract.
Estimations.
Second year, year two of that. Some increased special education costs anticipated. This is where it gets harder. You got budget and actual, so we're anticipating some of these increases. We feel like it's gonna come about. And I don't mean to, I mean, our employee contract is our employee contracts, you know. All of our costs are going up, and we don't get state funding to match it, so that's where that's at. That's a good question, though.
Any other questions? No need a motion or anything on this, right?
This is where it gets interesting, because expenditures, you know, the tennis court lease, I mean, all of that stuff is on. We have revenues for those things, you know. We did get increase from the state, so can the total cost of the employee contract be the cause? No, I mean, some of it, but, you know, it's just, we just have, you know, our expenditures going up, and that's one of those things that I think, you know, we also talked about our inefficiencies with our elementary schools, you know, but we can't do anything about that right at the moment either, so. They've been in place for a while, and, you know, but it's starting to finally just catch up, and I think that's where the timing of this is gonna be helpful, too, because we know we can save some dollars by bringing the elementary together, so, you know, there are operational savings there, too.
Yeah. I just think we're gonna be really under that, people are really gonna be watching this when they're looking to vote on this new school. So I think we need to be really careful about what we're deficit spending at this time. I mean, not that we don't always, but I really think it's gonna be under scrutiny.
Sure. And I think, again, you know, when people talk about that, when you talk about a building, that's, that's Fund Seven.
Right.
This is Fund One. This is just our general fund. So, you know, this, on a bond referendum, they're not, they're two different funds.
Right.
Two different systems of accounting, and because, you know...
People just don't always see it that way, though.
Yeah, I know.
You know, I mean, that's...
I know, I know. And, you know, and I think that's why, too, we, you know, we've asked, but increases in operating levy have been denied, and I think that's, I hope the community can also say, "We're gonna take a look at what we're doing, how we're doing it, and try to save some dollars that way." And I, you know, anytime you make reductions, it can hurt a little bit. I mean, it's never, but hopefully, we got, can do some things, too, that don't have as, I think the first, last place we want to make cuts is in the classroom, so we'll always look at other areas where we can make sure that we're extending everything as best we can, or as wisely as we can.
Thank you. And thank you to the committee. Set a balance on that.
And, you know, we do want the board to make, you know, to make a motion that we, the administration has directed to look at that. That doesn't mean that the cuts automatically happen here. We still have to bring that back to the board, and the board has to look at what these recommendations are, or what these recommended cuts would be before they're approved. So you will, you'll definitely get another look at what we're doing. The committee will be meeting with, it'd be a different committee, well, it could be a different committee. Might be the same three, I don't know. But, but the committee will also have some oversight as to what we're looking at and where those are, the cuts are. Because if there is something that's, "Don't, don't touch that," then we'll just, we don't want to get into. We're not at that point where we have to get contentious with this stuff, so.
Any other comments?
I'm gonna adjourn my last meeting.
Oh, you don't? Oh, yeah, we need a motion.
Directing the administration to...
Oh, we have, we do need a motion. Well, then, you don't have it written there, Darby Tarts.
I know that.
She's my go-to person. Okay?
Be a recommendation to, direct administration to give consideration to 400,000 to 600,000 budget reductions for the 1920 school year.
That. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make the, my final motion to direct administration to make cuts, potential cuts from 400 to 600,000 for the upcoming budget for 2019.
Good job.
1920.
But I think you want to put recommendations.
Recommendations, yes. What did I say?
You said cuts.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Recommendations.
Yep.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Taubert. That was awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Wees.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Huh?
Well, thanks, Darby Tarts. It's okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of what she said? Can you read it back to me, please?
Motion, directing administration, recommendations to look at cutting 400 to 600,000 dollars in the budget for the 1920 school year.
Very good. Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries now?
Well, prior to adjournment, you do have one other thing.
I'll cry. I don't know if she will.
I'm hoping not to.
Just in recognition for four years of dedication and service to the student staff and residents of Pipestone Area Schools, a remembrance and plaque to Tammy Taubert, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you. I've enjoyed my time. I appreciate all the meetings and the time that you guys have all committed as well to me being on this board, and I appreciate all of you, and best of luck as you continue on with the new board and making the best decisions for our district, so, thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
And Wendy, in appreciation for your five years of dedication and service to the student staff and residents of Pipestone Area Schools, here's a remembrance plaque for you, so.
Thank you.
It's been an honor and a pleasure. I'll be blogging, just, no, it'll be on the Facebook page.
Thanks, Wendy.
All the things I've learned. No, thank you all, and I wish you all good luck, and, and to the new people coming on. Thank you. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So long.
Thank you, Mr. Botts.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. All those in favor signify by... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right.